Good evening. The meeting is open for the Planning Board. There are agendas near the door if you'd like an agenda. And you should like an agenda. Each meeting begins in the same format, so it's a time for public comment. If you have something you want to tell us about that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. And anytime during the meeting, if you're going to be coming to the microphone to speak, then please don't speak from your chair. Walk over to the microphone, give your name and what you're speaking on. That way, you're connected to FCTV and the people at home can hear it and follow it, which we want to have happen. So with that, is there anyone who has a public comment to make? No. Okay, then Paul? The minutes?
I recommend tabling the minutes of August 27, 2024, since they have not been completed. I have not reviewed them.
Oh, to table them. Okay, can we have a motion?
Second.
A second? Do we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've tabled the minutes. So we just got to my guess. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may. Do you want to make an announcement about the last item on the agenda, asking for a continuance or perhaps take it out of order?
Oh, okay, we could do that. The last item on the agenda is Home-to-Home Development LLC. If you're looking at your agenda, definitive plan application to create an 11-lot subdivision at 02 and 20 Lewis Street and 0 Old Bayberry Lane. We've, this came up before, and they have withdrawn that for this evening, and they've sent us a letter to that effect. And we are, need a motion to continue it until our next meeting, which will be, let's see.
Technically not our next meeting.
No, it's not.
But the meeting after that.
The meeting after that until September 24th. Want to move that?
Okay, but I will do that, but we have to also request that they extend the deadline because the deadline is right there.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I will move that we accept their request to continue to September 24th under the provision that they provide a codified written request to extend the deadline.
They have already agreed to extend the deadline to October 23rd.
They have already agreed to that, thank you. The letter that we were given just before the meeting.
October 23rd.
They've agreed to all of that. So that's the motion. Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we will be hearing that on the 24th next. Okay, so.
I prepared for an hour for that.
So just in case anyone's here for the 2 Lewis Street subdivision, that has been continued until another meeting.
I did, but for about 10 minutes.
2 Lewis Street will not be heard tonight.
Damn.
Thanks for coming.
So that's that one change to the agenda, in which case we can be moving on. First up, we have the applicant Falmouth Concrete Corp., special permit application to allow for parking in the front yard of manufacturing building located at 0 Thomas B. Landers Road. And we actually have two items on that, for that company. I believe we did not close the hearing.
We did. Your last meeting, you closed the hearing on the special permit. You voted in approval of it. We're still drafting that decision. You still have an open meeting on the site plan review for that application. And the applicant is here to go over those new.
To go over that.
New plans that were submitted today.
Okay, who is, uh-huh. Mr. Flower.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Flower. I am representing Falmouth Concrete Corp. At our last hearing, we continued it pending receipt of the engineering referral, which came in last week. So we were given that referral last Friday and submitted revised plans today that I believe address the comments of the engineering referral. Jed and I spoke today. He asked that I reach out to Chuck Markinson at Marine and Environmental Services, which I have done, but have not connected with him as of yet. I think we've addressed the concerns that were set forth in the engineering referral, but would be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
I have no questions. Are there any questions from the board? Jim?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. I just read everything I said last time. I believe that our town planner should check with the other towns and see what they do regarding design review, because I think we've dropped that off our agenda and we're approving things. And I don't, I know everyone disagrees with me, but I think we should incorporate it. I'd like you to have Jed check with all the other towns and see how they're doing it, because I think we are not in sync with what I believe is the right way to do it. But that's my own humble opinion. I know the rest of the board members don't agree. But I'd like to have you take a check, see what the neighbors are doing, because I think we're wrong. I just wanted to say that.
Again.
Again.
It never hurts to check.
I do have a problem when we get things in at the last minute.
I haven't even looked at it.
I haven't looked at it either. I don't even know what the changes are.
So Ms. Kerwood, in fairness, I was made aware of the engineering referral Friday afternoon.
No, I'm not.
Yeah.
You were too, but then maybe this should be extended.
Which, that was, that's our expectation this evening, so.
Oh, good.
You know, we've submitted the plans, we've, you know, we've done what we can on our end.
Thank you.
I think that this board was at the last hearing ready to ask Jed to draft a positive motion, assuming that there's no other issues that have arisen and pending your review, further review of the revised plans. The only real change to the plans were the addition of some dimensions, notations regarding site distances and things like that that specifically addressed the comments of the engineering department.
And I'd like to make sure that they were totally addressed, and we just got it.
Now, okay, but.
Can I, a question about things showing up the same day.
Sure.
I work two jobs. I prepare on Mondays for these things. I'm going full speed. I had no idea these plans even come in. I don't think we should let them come in. I thought we had a policy that they had to be in at a certain time, but we seem to, I know we want to help people, but I can't keep up with a last-minute. I just can't do it.
Totally fair.
So Mr. Fox, just to that point, I would say if we were asking for a decision tonight, I would 100% agree with that. But, you know, in this case where we're expecting that this is going to be moving forward still.
I don't mind if it's an extension, but I can't even discuss something I haven't even read.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's tough, because, you know, we, like I said, Friday before 4:00, I was made aware of the engineering referral.
That should be the deadline.
I think the deadline is the Thursday.
Yeah, it used to be Thursday, yeah.
Well, it still is, but they didn't make the deadline, and we all know that that's true. But we also more or less agree that these were minor changes and were readily made. So how long do we wish to hold this up?
We do have to be flexible.
We do have to be flexible.
I just need to make that point, that I didn't even know this extension just happened. I didn't even know about it.
I didn't know until I sat down here.
That's not fair.
And look how fast I'm adapting.
Right. Well, you're much faster than I am.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we take this up after having time to review it at our next meeting.
Could I add to that? I am wondering if it would be okay with the whole board to say that you do draft the positive motion just in case you do a thorough review and find that in fact there were minor changes and acceptable, and we don't have to hold it up longer. So if you could amend your.
And I will, and I think we need as a board to have the list of the minor changes, too.
Okay, it's there.
Oh, it is.
We'll provide it to you in a digital form, and we'll email it to the board, just like we normally do. The question I have for you is, do you want to schedule them? I guess the question would be to the applicant for the 17th or the 24th of September. So don't forget, you're opening your public hearings for your zoning articles.
Right, we have the business for the 17th, so I would go for the 24th.
24th.
Mr. Flower, is that okay with you?
Just double-checking. Either date is perfectly fine.
It's up to the board. We can be ready on either one. Want to do the 24th?
Okay, we wish to extend to the 24th. John?
I prefer the 17th.
Because?
Because the applicants here again tonight. This is really pretty simple. I know they made some, we got some information from engineering, but it's not that complicated. So I would prefer to do it on the 17th. It should be fairly short hearing, and that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm in agreement. I'd like to move it as fast as possible.
Okay, would you amend your motion?
Sure, it's amended to the 17th.
Okay, did we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
17th it is.
Thank you, we really appreciate the expediency, so thank you.
Right, I mean, we really, we're making a point for quite some time about streamlining, and it's good to, you know, stick to the letter of everything, but not lose sight of that.
Thanks, Fox.
So moving on.
How do we lose half our crowd?
Well, the point, we'll just let that go. Okay, now, we have a planning board decision, I believe, on Roy E. Akenbach's proposal, site plan review application to construct a detached accessory apartment at 10 Riddle Hill Road. We have the motion. Bob, could you read the motion?
May. Drafted September 5, 2024. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Roy Akenbach for the construction of a detached accessory apartment located 10 Riddle Hill Road under Section 240-12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw with the following conditions. Findings: The applicant seeks to construct a 663-square-foot, one-bedroom detached accessory apartment that will be 27% of the principal dwelling. Following all construction, the property will continue to have a total of four bedrooms, three-bedroom principal dwelling, and a one-bedroom accessory apartment. Site plan shows an existing paved driveway which complies with Section 249-1D, 1C, and Section 240-14.1E of the zoning bylaw, respectively. The Planning Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-9.1 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Excuse me. Full or partial occupancy shall not be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and precedent, predecessor approvals have been met. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. Four, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may not be rented, but not both. Five, an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission assigned by the property owner. Six, the applicant shall contact the engineering division for an address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. Seven, the applicant shall contact the assessors' office for an inspection prior to certification of occupancy.
Second. Thank you, and there's a second from Pat. Is there any further discussion from the board?
I'd just like to make one comment, because I see a lot of new faces here tonight, that this is an abbreviated reading. The full decision can be seen in the planning office if you desire to do so.
Is that okay? It's pretty standard language, and which is, it's on record. Any other comments, questions? No, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
So this is approved. Mr. Akenbach, it's all set. Moving on. The applicant is Falmouth Manufacturing Center LLC, site plan review application to construct a 9,960-foot, square-foot building intended for manufacturing on a portion of a lot setback approximately 300 feet from 550 East Falmouth Highway. We've heard this, we closed it, we have a motion that was drafted for us, and Bob, are you willing again?
Yep. Drafted September 5, 2024. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the request to modify the previous approval for Falmouth Boat Storage LLC, now Falmouth Manufacturing Center LLC, for the construction of a 9,960-square-foot building with 34 parking spaces located at 550 East Falmouth Highway under Section 240-12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. Findings: The applicant is proposing to amend the 2021 Planning Board's site plan review approval. The modification includes rotating the building approximately 90 degrees and shifting itself towards the least limit area. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant informs to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39, yeah, 39, and Section 240-9.1 of the zoning bylaw. All conditions set forth in the 2021 Planning Board's site plan review approval still apply in our, as follows. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the main structure, a structural engineer will prepare and file suitable plans of the proposed retaining walls located on the site. Three, construction of this project shall follow the Town Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions document, which can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. Four, the applicant shall see the engineering division for address assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address to this building per Section 99.1, affixing illegible numbers required. Five, or six, rather, the applicant shall post additional signage and addresses as shown on the house number assignment change issued September 20, 2021.
Second. We have heard the motion, and it has a second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Are we all in agreement, time to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And so that is approved. Moving on. We come to a public hearing on a matter that we have been hearing. The applicant is Stephen Marsh, definitive plan application to create a 3-lot subdivision at 0 Old Barnstable Road. Click here for the application and plans, and I think this is what you have come to hear about. So this might take longer. Speaking for, you are the applicant.
I am, yeah. Steve Marsh. So we've submitted a plan to do 3 lots at the end of Catawba. We're only looking for 4 waivers on the entire project. I know that the plan had to be resubmitted to the engineering department.
Did you get a copy of the engineering report?
I did. You handed it to me at the last meeting. So we made all of the changes and submitted everything back to every department that was supposed to get something. And I've not heard anything since.
Right, and we all got that, the engineering report, at about the same time. You did?
Yes.
So we're probably not going to be making any decisions tonight at all, because there are definitely open issues, but we are planning to discuss some of them.
Happy to do so.
Right, okay. Paul?
Yeah, I'm a little troubled by this, because the engineering report indicates that there's a number of outstanding issues. And there's at least 25 of them that refer to the Planning Board if they want these done. If there's that many outstanding issues, I don't think it's appropriate to begin discussing this at this time.
Well, I would normally agree with that, and I did agree with it initially. But then I had an opportunity to talk with Jed before the meeting, and he feels that we can make progress with some of them, but we will wind up definitely not deciding anything. So, but let's see what progress we can make. Jim?
I just wanted to comment on what Paul said. Paul, I believe when I read that, they were just saying that it's all our call, not theirs. They weren't saying they're open meetings. They were saying it's the Planning Board issue. They weren't saying, oh, this is open. Said, "Planning Board, that's your issue." That's the way I read that memo. I might be wrong, but I did read it.
See, my interpretation of that, we often see that. It's referred back to the Planning Board, is.
You're being thorough, that's all.
Is, it's up to you. These are your regulations. Are you going to enforce them or not?
That's the way I read it.
That's actually the question.
Yeah.
So it doesn't mean it's free ride. It means it's up to us.
Right.
So we will treat it that way. But for others of them, from the engineering report, they were not. There are some, I think, Jed, that can be cleaned up, not cleaned up, but dealt with sort of summarily.
Right.
Do you want to go through from the beginning of the report?
Well, I would start by going through the waivers. That's where I would start. The formal waiver requests to make sure that you're okay with what they're requesting. And then we can try to get into the design, specifically the design of the term or the end of the street, of the extension, and the way it is located within the right-of-way, the cul-de-sac circle. I think that's an important point.
If we're okay with the waivers, I don't think we'll be deciding whether we're okay.
Well, I think we, you should try to give the applicant an indication as to whether or not you would be okay with approving these waivers so that they have an idea as to whether or not they need to either, if you're not comfortable with approving the waivers, they have to then include the item. So as an example, I believe one of the waivers is to not have street lighting, right? And if you're not comfortable with that, you should probably, you should make that clear to the applicant so that they can then put it into the plan, because they know that you will not be granting that waiver. You understand what I mean?
I do. It was right here on.
So if, if we could provide the applicant a copy of the latest engineering referral, which has a lot of outstanding comments, then for the board, the planning office put together an item-by-item list for you to consider of all of your subdivision regulations, our interpretation as to whether or not the plans met, conformed, or if further action is needed on your behalf. Now, there's a long list. There's got to be easily 40 items, but that's just your regulations. And your regulations say, when you come and you file a subdivision plan, you have to provide X number of copies of this plan and that plan and this plan. So a lot of it's just conformances to submission, but then there's also construction details, which are important. Adding street trees, adding streetlights, sidewalks, et cetera. Those are the types of conversations we need to have with the applicant. It would be beneficial to have with the applicant today so that the planning office can work with him in between time for your next hearing so that we can iron out any of the outstanding details.
Madam Chair, if I can just make a comment. I'm not disagreeing with what Jim says. But when I see a lot of things that the Planning Board should decide, if something, if a waiver is required, that's a little bit more than just it's been handed. So all I'm suggesting is that we look at these, and I'm not stopping the process or objecting to the program, but I think we should look at it carefully. It's just not, it's being handled. Request a waiver, so we do need to deal with the waivers.
Correct. So as an example, the first waiver is the pavement width. Your regulations require a pavement width of 22 feet, and that includes 2, 1-inch berms on either side, sorry, 1-foot berms on either side. The request here is to waive that requirement and only approve a 19-foot paved surface. So that should give to the applicant, are you comfortable with 19 feet? Or would you like them to put in that 22 feet that your regulations require?
Well, I think with this application, there's been a lot of interest from the abutters. So if we're going to begin with the waivers, I'd like to have the abutters have an opportunity to speak on each one of them also.
Okay, would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
So as I mentioned, the first one, and I'll just read directly from their letter. The first waiver is pavement width. Required is 22 feet, including 2 12-inch berms. However, the current width of Catawba Lane is 18, 19 feet. There's a typo there. 19 feet, including 6-inch berms. And therefore, we need to request a waiver that the width is approved at 19 feet. Other details per Town Standards Road Cross Section are not met for the same reason, and a waiver is therefore requested on these details, specifically shoulder width, sidewalk, and width of compacted gravel base. That's the first waiver request. Second waiver is length of.
Let's take them one at a time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we've got a waiver here so that the road that may be put in, may or may not, would match the width of the road that's already there.
That's correct.
Is that correct? That's the sense of it?
Yes.
Okay, first, let's hear from the abutters, what their thought is on that.
I have a question first.
John?
Jed, he's asking for 19 feet, including the berms.
Yes.
What is the paved width of the standard subdivision in our guidelines?
22.
22.
He's asking for 3 feet foot.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
But the existing road is 19.
I understand.
Question, does the existing road have sidewalks?
It does not.
Does the existing road have streetlights?
No.
Our understanding is it does not, no.
Okay, just so we all can picture this. Any of the abutters, do you want to comment on the width of the road question?
Do you want me to sit?
Um, yeah, just make room for them. I can't find that list.
Good evening, my name is Kurt Raiber, and I'm a resident at 115 Monthegan Road. My property faces the other end of Catawba. We probably all have some issues with some of the waivers, but I would suggest that, you know, the road is 19 feet. It was built probably with a waiver at the time. There are no streetlights. There are sidewalks on some of our roads, but not all. But I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, because when we were last year, the board said they were going to seek an opinion from Town Council about the right of access to this lot at all. So shouldn't that be where we start?
We're talking about a different subject right now.
May.
What, what we're doing now is not clearing every single question. We're just doing what business we can, because you're here to make a little progress. Jed?
So we did seek an opinion from our Town Council's office as to the rights to access. It's clear that it is not within the Planning Board's purview to determine or litigate if the applicant has the right to access through Catawba Lane. As a compromise, what we'll simply suggest, the planning staff will suggest to the board, is that we add a condition to any approval that you might consider that clearly indicates that that issue needs to be addressed before the construction of any kind on that land, through your approval.
We're amenable to that.
Was that understood, sir? You want to come here?
Let's go through our four items first.
We will.
Yeah, we want to stay in order, yeah.
We're on track here.
We like to.
Aren't you speaking on the issue of the pavement width? No, all right, that's not what we're doing. The access issue was brought up. That's not an issue we can deal with. We're not going to discuss it here. So we're sticking to looking at the requested waivers and getting a sense of the board and the public on those waivers. That's, that's what we're doing now. So if you want to speak about the access, this isn't the place.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just want to remind the board, if I may. Item 7 of the preliminary plan decision states that Steve Marsh should work with the abutters to resolve legal access rights prior to filing a definitive plan. This was never done.
And right now, we're on paving. Do you have a concern about the 19 feet?
I have a concern with the process.
We'll get rid of, we'll get to that later on. Right now, we're talking about the 19 feet.
I have some engineering concerns that I'll bring up later on stormwater management.
That'll be fine.
We'll get to that.
We're taking the waivers first, 4 of them. And you can speak on any of them. Anybody can.
Okay, it would appear, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a sense that the pavement width is not going to be an issue. Is that correct? Not an issue with the board? Doesn't appear to be an issue with the abutters? Then we can move on. The next thing that we're going to look at is the length of the dead-end street. 500 feet maximum, that's our regulation. Would you like to speak to that?
What we're proposing is to not do the full cul-de-sac and do the T-turnaround, which gets us less than 500 feet.
Okay. Jim?
I just wanted to, I looked into this definition of how to measure a cul-de-sac. And we, there are records, and I used to think it'd be all the way to the end, but I think I found in some of our records that you actually bisect the circle and you measure to the middle of the circle, and that's how it should be measured by definition. I didn't know if the other board members were aware of that,
I didn't know if the other board members were aware of that, but I have taught myself that, and I thought I'd, if you agree, I thought we should let everyone know-
I agree.
-that when we come up with this issue, that it's not the end of the street, but you bisect it and it's the center point, and that's where the, that's how you measure a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
According to the documents I found.
Yep.
If you know something different, that's fine.
No, no, I agree. Center of the cul-de-sac.
So, just to clarify that, so, let's say you've got a circle, and five-hundred feet ends at the middle of it, but the continue around the circle goes to five-fifty. Does that conform?
Yes.
Yeah.
You measure to the middle.
Okay.
In some cases, it goes to five-eighty.
Even if the circle goes beyond the five-hundred.
Right, it is the, I don't remember the numbers-
I agree.
-but I know it's there, I could bring up the point if I had to.
Thank you. But he's not, he's not asking for a circle, if I understand it correctly.
Well, so, would you mind just scrolling down to show the audience and the public at home? Just one more, if you wouldn't mind. So, the current proposal, as you can see, is a large circle, cul-de-sac-sized circle, which is considered the right-of-way, right? It's the land that would accommodate the new established road. And then, inside that circle, as you can see, there's a T-style turnaround with a long driveway that extends off of it. I mentioned this at the beginning, and our engineering division has raised this as an issue, because this is non-traditional. What you would typically do is draw a right-of-way line, so you would take that large circle and sort of shape it around the roadway itself, and therefore, you bring all of the parcel lines or the property lines from those larger parcels, and you shrink them down to where the road is. And so, those were, that was one of the main-
That's not agreeing with what Jim said. You're saying, take that property line down to where the road is.
Correct.
I understood Jim to say, you take it down to the middle of the circle.
We're not talking about the five-hundred-foot setback.
Right.
We're just talking about the roadway.
The roadway.
Yeah.
And I believe what I'm talking about doesn't have to be built, but it's how they establish the frontage-
Correct.
-that they need.
Correct.
They don't have to use it, but they would not be subdivisible if, because we have a different amount of frontage on the radius as opposed to the length, and so you have to create the circle-
Right.
-to do the subdivision plan.
Right. So, that's a, it's a very large circle?
Don't have to build it.
Correct.
But it has to be designed that way, or they don't, they might, but they might not, I think you need sixty feet on a cul-de-sac and a hundred feet-
Correct.
-and in order to get that sixty feet, you gotta put the circle out all the way, draw it in the middle, and then ask for a waiver not to build it. And that's my understanding.
That's exactly what we're doing.
So, what we would recommend is, because your regulations allow for a hammerhead, a T-style end of a roadway, that we would recommend that you pursue that design, and inside the regulations, it has the measurements that-
Got it.
-need to take place. That way, there, it's clear where the frontage exists on the road. There, it's a little ambiguous.
Okay. I think that if we're gonna be measuring it the way Mr. Fox said, we probably wouldn't even need the waiver, but we're gonna do that.
Okay.
So, but we're gonna do it that way.
All right.
The T.
The T.
The T.
So, there won't be a circle?
Correct.
Well, it'll be on the plan, it just won't get built.
Won't get built.
Well, you don't, you, so to clarify, there would not be a circle? So, the, when you create- No, you wouldn't even need the circle. You outline the T, and that creates your frontage. So, you don't need an actual circle, you just need to outline the hammerhead. We can, we can follow up with you.
Would they get their required frontage?
Well, that is up to your surveyor to figure out, but I would imagine-
They can do it either way.
Yeah.
I can do it either way, yeah, but we'll do it that way, with the, with the T.
Okay, so I think it's better that we don't react to this until you've got some drawings that we can all look at and we can all understand, and we-
But we're discussing it.
Right.
It's only four of them.
Okay, we need to go back for a minute to the first waiver request. I understood in saying, we're okay with the nineteen feet, that that would manage also the details, shoulder width, sidewalk, width of compacted gravel base. That may not be true. Is there any comment from the board on those items?
No. If I may, there aren't any in the subdivision now.
Right.
No sidewalks, at least on Catawba. No streetlights, essentially no shoulder.
So, for clarity's sake, would the board essentially be okay with, if this extension ever were to be built, that it would be built consistent with the design of Catawba Lane to its south?
Of the existing road.
Of the existing road?
Yes.
Okay.
That seems okay. Okay, so, we've, have we now dealt thoroughly with both one and two? This is to request a waiver, and we're not deciding till we see the new drawings. The third one is a waiver's request of a performance guarantee on the subdivision plan. I think we would put that off until we see what the plan is.
Okay.
And the fourth-
Go ahead.
I would not support that.
You would not?
No.
Because-
None of us would.
We'll get the bond, I'm gonna pull that, so we can just nix that, I'll get the bond, the performance guarantee.
And then, the last one here is street lighting.
They don't have any.
Any comments from the board first on that? Jim?
I'm not particular on this, but I just wanted to point something out that I've learned recently and have our staff maybe look into. I've been contacted about people with streetlights that run totally on solar. Now, they do cost more money, but they also don't have to run any wiring to them, and they're cost-effective. And maybe something we want to look into, they actually coat the streetlight with solar, and if you don't have trees around it, it does, it has a battery and it runs independently by itself. It's expensive, it costs nine thousand dollars, but you don't have to do any cabling to it, and that offsets the cost. Maybe we should look into it for either this one or some other one in the future, something I just learned.
I'm happy to do it on this. I'm happy to do, you know, a street light down.
It's just something I've learnt.
Okay.
Not everyone might be happy having a streetlight-
So, now I don't have to ask for it.
...on a currently unlighted road.
Not everybody wants the yard lit up.
Right.
I, on this argument-
On the plan, you can show us the location of the streetlight, we can discuss it later.
Keep in mind, we make this decision not for the people that live just in the street today. We have requirements for people that can live for the next fifty years. And I know sometimes people want safe streets and having lighting is important, and it's part of our subdivision plan for a reason. Now, I just want to bring it up, and if the neighbors don't want, but I think we need to be careful. We've, we've had situations before where the neighbors don't want to do any sidewalks, we made them put it in, because I brought up, what if a blind person lived on that street and they wanted to get out to the bus, they can't get there? And so, we've got to take a little bit longer view as a planner, as opposed just to give the neighbors what they want.
That's not what's happening here.
It's a private community.
He's requesting it, not the neighbors, but-
I was just-
No, don't speak from there, please.
Let's see it on the plan, and then we can make a decision.
I'll put it, I'll put the lighting on the plan, and if you decide to do it, I'm willing to do it. And if there's, if you don't want it, then I will do it.
It'll be there and can be commented on at that time.
Very well.
Okay, so-
If I may, I just want to provide a point of clarity. So, the third waiver request was simply to waive the requirement to have the performance guarantee language on the definitive plan page. It is not to waive the requirement for the, for the performance guarantee, simply to waive the requirement that it's printed onto the definitive plan. I would suggest that you not grant that waiver, that all definitive plans should have a surety of some sort. It sounds like the applicant's willing to either do a covenant or a bond. So, just for clarity's sake, that third waiver, it sounds like we're striking, but I just wanted, for the good of the audience and for everyone who's listening, it is not to-
Okay, I'll clarify that, 'cause I understood it to be struck.
So did I.
Thank you. Okay. Then, do you want to go on and take a look at the, the different departments? I think we should look first at the engineering one, the one that we got latest, because there's a repeated phrase in that of, that it could easily be, didn't say easily, it could be done. And I think every place it says that you could do it, that you should. Are you familiar with that?
No, I haven't, we just got a new review.
Right, it, if you look down on the engineering report, the last line in each one is a recommendation from the, from the engineering department. They didn't make recommendations on most of them, they deferred it back to this board-
Correct.
-but for a whole set of them, most of them, they did make a recommendation, and their recommendation almost uniformly was, this could be done, and it, it probably should be done.
Yes. So, I'll give you an example, if I may. So, one of the items in your subdivision regulations says that the locations of existing buildings within twenty-five feet and the location of private wells within a hundred feet need to be noted on the definitive plan. So, as an example, number fourteen Catawba Lane is within twenty-five feet of the property line and therefore should be shown on the plans. A minor item, but it is a missing item. And in order for the applicant to not have that on the plan, you would need to grant a waiver, they would need to request it, right? So, we have flagged those types of things in our review, which I believe we've given to the applicant. The other item is just property bounds, some permanent monumentation. So, at every corner of these new properties, there needs to be a property bound to indicate where, you know, obviously where the property ends and where it curves.
Would you be putting property bounds on the lots that are not going to be built on?
Yes.
On all?
Yes.
On all three lots?
Yes, because it's helpful for not only the current owner, but it would be helpful for any potential future owner, and the abutting properties, because then they know where that property ends and where theirs begins. Property bounds are extremely helpful. Then, there's items like your typical cross-section and conformance with our regulations, which I think we've covered. But, for the most part, I think these items are somewhat minor in nature. The engineering referral, the most recent one, has a lot of blue language, or blue text. That is all related to the stormwater management permit that the applicant will have to file for and receive from the engineering division. That is outside of this process. We will, if you're comfortable, put in a condition of your eventual approval, which indicates that they need to seek that before you release the covenant in any way or release the bond, so that you're assured that a permit is issued by the engineering division before construction can occur. So, that's a lot of the blue text. The majority of the yellow text is, as you, Madam Chair, as you were mentioning, it's items that just, I believe the applicant can firm up in their, in their new plans that they provide to the board, but there's some minor things in here that they would want to take care of before it comes back to you for your consideration.
So, you're saying all the new comments should be addressed?
I would recommend that you do that, yes.
The majority of the yellow comments?
Well, the new comments in blue-
Mm-hmm.
-don't need to be addressed. They just have to file the stormwater permit application, such as, I don't know what it's called for short-
Stormwater.
-with, with the engineering department. It's a separate permit because it's over an acre.
I understood that. To me, that's addressing it. There's something they need to do in order to come into conformity.
Yeah, they just don't have to do it before your decision.
I'll try to have it done before we get in here, though.
There's so many changes that need to be made on these drawings, on these plans.
Yeah.
Is there anything else you think we could actually accomplish without seeing them made?
So, what I would suggest is, you know, obviously, you still have an open hearing. If there's comments from the public, you can certainly listen to those. And then, we're willing to sit with the applicant and go through these items if, if you ask us to, and, you know, we can straighten out all the requirements so that the next time that they appear before you, they've been able to address all of these things, and then we can walk through.
I could be hearing you wrong. There seems to be an assumption that we are going to go ahead and approve it. I haven't made that assumption. Have, has the board made that assumption?
We're only preparing for that, that item. If you decide that you don't want to approve it, that's also your prerogative. It's just, we try to front-load a lot of that work, because it's a lot of work to put together a-
Yeah, I just wanted it to be clear. It just sounded like the door closed.
I apologize.
I have another question, too, because we've got the deadline, which is already passed. Was there an extension asked for and granted?
We need-
I'll request one.
Yeah.
I'll write one up now and extend it.
Please, and I don't know how long you think it should be for.
Well, that would be up to the applicant. I don't know how quickly you can turn around plans, but we can certainly communicate offline about an extension and have it ready for the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Probably should hear these folks now.
I'll send that to you tomorrow, then.
Okay. Yeah, we have a form that we'll ask you to sign and whatnot.
Okay. Comments from the public. Could, could you take turns? You want to come first?
Yes, please. Sorry. My name's Anontus Macedo. I live at 185 Monteegan Road. And I'm just curious why we're all talking about all this and wasting all of your valuable time, when this gentleman doesn't even have access through our private community. We have not given him access to our private streets, and you guys are putting a lot of hours into this, and we don't want him coming through our neighborhood. So, I'm just a little curious on how you folks would address that.
I think what we're trying to do is respect the process. It actually puts the cart before the horse.
I respect the process as well, but I respect your time as well. I pay my taxes, I just don't understand how we keep entertaining this, when he doesn't even have access to that property. It's not his property.
She's trying to answer your question.
I did, I understood that.
And it's answered, right?
Due process, but what about our process?
You have, you're part of the process, you're up here speaking.
I mean, we've lived there for thirty years, paying taxes, fixing our own roads, we're a private community, and the fact that you guys are entertaining this, that hasn't, none of us want.
We are entertaining it, because he's an applicant, he's, he can come and apply, and we are here-
So, where do we stand?
We are within deadlines that we need to respect.
Yeah, I understand.
And therefore, we are listening to it, and we have said repeatedly, the last time you were here, and again, that the problem that you're raising of access, we have no jurisdiction over that.
So-
So, the things that we can deal with, we are, because we've been asked to, and we should, but the rest, you have to let that go.
I know, but I don't understand how you're taking your time as the planning board, when he doesn't have access to the property he's talking about. It seems like a-
It does seem upside down.
It does.
It does, and sometimes things are upside down, but that's the way this is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Just regarding engineering aspects, I just would like to say a few things. Item thirty-six, I read the engineering report, I read the comments from the town engineers, I read the comments, feedback from Steve Marsh's engineer. Item thirty-six, eastern roadway radius is shown outside the roadway layout and extending into fourteen Catawba Lane abutting parcel. We recommend the plan be revised so that all roadway construction is limited to the roadway layout, or provide an easement or other right of, right for the encroachment onto fourteen Catawba's lot. That's my property, and I would never agree to that, so... I wouldn't agree to an easement on my property, so the, the plan would have to be revised.
Correct. Yep.
The plan would have to be revised.
Mm-hmm.
Item forty-four and item forty-five, these are the last items. It isn't clear that these plans represent a subdivision of land, since there would only be one lot created. In paragraph three oh five dash three definitions, a lot is defined as an area of land in one ownership with definite boundaries, used or available for use as the site of one or more buildings, and the plans indicate only one lot would be used for a building. This is kind of confusing how he has his plans laid out. If there's one lot, I think the plan should be revised to show just one buildable lot.
It technically already does.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all clear with that.
Yep.
And lastly, forty, number forty-five, it isn't clear what protections would be on parcels A and B. That would restrict development in the future. I've previously commented on this. In fact, I introduced Steve Marsh to the three hundred committee to set up a conservation restriction, and Jessica Rittenhour said he was unwilling to work with them. The town engineer says, "We defer to the board if adequate restrictions will be placed on these unbuildable lots in perpetuity." So, my question is, how do we, what are the guarantees that lots A and B would not be developed?
So, Madam Chair, if I may. So, what we, the planning staff would suggest to the board is that we include a condition in your potential decision, which says that, something to the effect of, these instruments, these legal instruments protecting parcel A and B need to be recorded at the registry B, need to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds prior to any covenant release. So a covenant is an agreement between the board and the applicant, which restricts the sale or building of any of those properties until such time that all of your conditions have been met. So in your decision, you can put in decisions, or put in conditions, which indicate homework assignments, if you will, that the applicant needs to satisfy. And at that point, once they do that, they can apply for a covenant release, and they can apply for a building permit and start to build their structure. The covenant also puts it in an agreement that all of the utilities and roadway work is done prior to any building permit issuances or applications. So what I'm saying is, there's a decision that has a condition, that has a covenant, that protects-
How enforceable is that?
It's state law. It's absolutely enforceable. The building commissioner can enforce that on your behalf.
Let me ask you a question. Or maybe the question should go to Mr. Marsh. What's the point in making it three lots when two of them will never be used as buildable lots? Why not just make it one lot?
Right. Well, I mean, so technically, this is a one lot, one lot subdivision. Now, there's a difference between a lot and a parcel. Parcel is considered to be a piece of land that shall not be built on. It doesn't have legal frontage, or it's not buildable for some reason. A lot is a piece of land which is, it is allowable to receive a building permit. This is a complicated case because they're extending a roadway. They're adding in utilities, and they're building a road. That's what the subdivision control law is all about. Providing roadway access to new or what used to be unbuildable land. That's why this is coming through the subdivision control process, because of the road, the utilities, and it technically is just for one lot.
But you could do that and have one lot. You can do that and have one lot.
Yes, and that is the proposal. One lot-
Then why are we speaking about A and B at all?
Well, because there's concern about them never being developable. And the way in which the applicant has indicated that that will not happen is through a legal instrument, a conservation restriction of some sort, which says this land is never available for development.
Would it not be simpler to just make it a single lot?
Well, again, you get into this situation where you're extending a road, a subdivision, yeah. So it's, our preference, our recommendation would be to continue the course of action, allow for one buildable lot, two parcels that will permanently be restricted for development. Make sure that that legal instrument is recorded, signed and recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so that there's no claim that it never happened. Then you can, we would recommend, at some point in the future, once the road and utilities are built, release the covenant and allow for a building permit for that structure. That would be our recommendation.
I had two more items, if I could. I'll be quick. I understand you're all volunteers, and I appreciate your service to the town of Falmouth. How will potential stormwater impacts to Catawba Lane cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac, be evaluated and mitigated? The Catawba Lane cul-de-sac is absolutely downgradient of this property, and impervious surfaces will be created. I already have a stormwell, a storm, a dry well there that's already old and failing, and really, it takes like two days to drain after a rain event. So I don't see anything in here for mitigating the impacts of stormwater to the cul-de-sac, which, the existing cul-de-sac, which is downgradient. It's downgradient. And the town engineers have stated, and I agree, the stormwater management plan is inadequate. It is inadequate. And I'm just stating that. As an engineer, I'm also a PE. It's completely inadequate. And I'm the one that's going to suffer.
So just for the record, the stormwater management permit will be handled by our engineering division. It will not be approved through the planning board. It will be a separate permit application that the applicant has to seek through the DPW. So again, that will be another one of our conditions in a eventual decision that says they have to go seek this stormwater management permit, which is much more stringent than the regulations you have in your subdivision rules and regulations.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, my name's Kurt Raiber at 115 Monthegan. I just wanted to ask, there's been one engineering set of questions that's been answered sort of by the applicant's engineer. There's been a second set of questions or recommendations? Or are those recommendations from the staff? Or both?
Both.
Okay. Are those public record?
Yes.
Okay. And has there been a second set of plans submitted in recent days? No. Okay. I just wondered if I had missed anything.
Yep.
Finally, I would say, I think the list of four waivers really needs to be 20 or 30. It needs to be line by line, statute by statute. And then finally, with the amount of raw native land that's being disrupted, doesn't this trigger a conservation review as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I have to look into that. I'm not sure exactly what the, I would say, perhaps the applicant can talk about that.
We have been through conservation. They've signed off. We've been through natural heritage with regard to any concerns with any species that are protected. There was one, a whippoorwill, which was on the back corner by the Beagle Place, and that has been addressed. We also left 150-foot strip of land for the wildlife corridor. I just want to make one point. My offer originally to the abutters was, I would do one lot if I got no resistance. I'm going to do the three lots if I'm going to encounter resistance. So we want to continue with the three lots. So they stopped talking to me at the last meeting, which, you know, I was encouraged to communicate with them. We tried. I've tried numerous times. But I am going to go for the three lots, regardless of how you vote or-
What advantage does that give you?
Now I have three lots. I had made it clear in the very beginning, Madam Chair, that if they were going to, I would do one lot. I spent a lot of money to have all of these plans done to show the one lot. At this point, made the offering to them that if we did the one lot, no problem, and we don't have to go to court. I'm likely going to go to court on the access issue, or I'm prepared to go to court. That's more money that I have to spend. So I am going to go for the three lots unless they reach back out to me. And I'm offering the olive branch one more time, but if they don't, I'm going to request the three lots. I'm going to come in with a three-lot subdivision and do three lots. And it's not just for my benefit. It's for the benefit of the landowners, too. They've been here 140 years. They, one of them actually sat on the planning board many years ago. So it's in their interest, too. Originally, we planned on just doing the one lot, and I don't know if you remember that, but that's what I proposed. One lot. I agree with you. Doing one lot makes sense. That offer's still on the table. And if they wanted to do that, they can reach out to me. But in the meantime, I may be, I may withdraw this and reapply with just a full three-lot subdivision. So I'm offering, so I'll talk to you tomorrow. We'll see if they reach out to me. I know that they had a meeting. I was not invited to it, and I was supposed to be. But, so that's pretty much how I'm-
Okay. I think we've gone as far as we can go tonight.
Sure.
Really, I'm concerned about people having copies of all the information. This Mr. Raiber asked for, from the town engineers and the town departments. Do we have extra copies here?
We could make them pretty quickly if people want to, if you want to wait for them.
Well, I'm not going to use mine in the meantime. If you want one of them, it's here.
They can always email. We would recommend that emailing the planning department. We can provide a digital copy.
Okay. It just makes it easier if we all have the same information and the same concerns all the way around.
Agreed.
So we're working toward it, but we didn't get here tonight. Is there anything anyone on the board would like to add? No? In that case, we'll continue. We ought to pick a date?
You need to, yes.
You've got actually a lot to do. I don't think you, I don't think we should consider the 17th. We should consider the 24th, or perhaps going into October.
The next meeting, the first meeting in October is October 8th.
That's fine with me.
October 8th?
Yes.
And while we're on the subject, could we talk about a extension deadline so that I can prepare the paperwork in advance? Would you be okay with a deadline extension to, say, the end of November?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be all right?
If it works.
Just to give you plenty of time.
Thank you very much.
What's the continuation date?
October 8th.
No.
No, to October 8th, was it? October 8th?
Yes, October 8th.
October 8th.
Right.
So the matter will be continued until October 8th.
Okay, so that's it for tonight. I would say, again, it would be better to work together. Moving on, we now are the part of our agenda where we have discussion items. So if you're not interested in the discussion, one is the planning board report and committee reports. I wonder if you could just leave quietly?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You turn that arrow on.
Yeah.
It's funny, the lights heat this room up fast.
Yeah, it gets stuffy really.
It's too cold, or it's too hot?
I know, it's freezing.
Well, we're going to be needing heat soon, so we might as well enjoy it.
Don't you say that, Jim.
Here it is. This is, but there's no copy of it. We're looking now at Donna Eccleston's letter, in which she says, did we all get it? In which she says, "A document generated by the town states explicitly by name that we, the original owners of all that land, do have access through Catawba Circle, which was characterized as temporary until such time as we needed access to our property, but temporary by something generated at some undated time must have expired."
Yeah, I would recommend, considering the fact that you've continued the item, not to discuss it as a group. But I've read that letter as well. I plan to follow up with the applicant to try to dig to the bottom of that.
Okay, moving on.
Yep. So, planning department report. This is a very exciting time for us. We've been working, as you know, on this downtown parking management plan. And we're about to unveil all of the hard work that our consultants have done for us, and all of the hard work our staff has done, collecting all this information and pulling together recommendations for how to make the downtown parking better and more accessible. So importantly, this Thursday, September 12th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Mullen Hall Elementary School cafeteria, our consultants will be there. They'll be providing a presentation, summarizing all of the work that's gone into it, and then outlining importantly some of the recommendations, and then taking some feedback from the public. So we want to announce this and encourage folks to attend. So that's my first update.
Oh, I thought you were maybe going to give us a preview.
No, no, there's no preview. You have to actually come to the meeting.
Okay.
But as I said last night at the select board meeting, we will post the presentation afterwards. FCTV is going to be there to record it. We'll post everything on our webpage, which is located here. So if you go to current projects on the planning page, there's a whole write-up about the parking management plan. It's a sister initiative to the wayfinding initiative that we're currently under as well. That's a little bit later on down the road. While you're on the planning page, if I may, we encourage everyone to go to the planning board link. And we have not only your current articles that you're proposing at four-town meeting, but also the redline versions listed on the page. So folks at home, if they're interested in finding out what you're proposing, some of the easier reads are the redlines. So I'll just click on this first one. So you are proposing these changes to the mixed residential and commercial overlay district currently. Now, as we talked about earlier this evening, you are opening your public hearing next week on Tuesday, September 17th. And all of these articles will be available for folks to come and comment on. So we just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So there are six articles altogether. Amendments to Mr. Cott with the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, two amendments to the accessory apartment bylaw, one to amend the text, and then the other to amend how it's displayed in the use tables, because don't forget, the accessory apartments are now allowed by right, by state law. Then there are proposed amendments to the home occupation bylaw, which are, we are now calling the home-based business. Home-based business, yes, that's right. And we are changing the definition. So there's two articles for that particular bylaw itself. And then last, but certainly not least, Article 10, the nonconforming section. All of that information is just a click away. Click on this link, and you can see all of the redlines that our consultants have put together for us that will be going to town meeting. And very soon, we'll have a precinct meeting scheduled, which will make sure that we have plenty of volunteers to attend.
All right. Did the board all get redline copies of the articles that are going to town meeting?
No.
No.
I mean, your package for you.
You have them now. And the, the home-based business is, just to clean up, it's not, it's not a big change. The accessory apartments-
I have a question. Accessory, are you changing, I didn't hear you mention changing the square footage from 800 and 900?
We're making it conform to the new state law. That's the point of it.
All right.
Wanted to keep it brief.
Okay.
Right. So that's what's happened. Okay, and it's been combed through by the law department. And they had to change the charts also, so that would read correctly. But the two to really read really carefully for the board, one is, Mr. Cott has been a little bit more than tweaked. So please take a good look at it and see what you think about that. And the nonconforming, because we don't really deal with that on this board, but what was done with this is to add in a lot of things from the state law that people dealing with it would need to know about anyway. So John, from your time on the zoning board, you probably will be our most, this might be not true, but our most knowledgeable reader on that, I would think.
It's been 24 years since I've been on the board.
But your memory's good.
I'm born up on it.
Okay, yeah, if you would. But it was gone over very, very carefully for quite a long time. So take a good look. And I think I'm going to write a little letter to the editor of the enterprise to encourage town meeting members to come to these, the hearings that we will be holding on these articles, so that by the time we get there in November, they won't have a pile of questions, or at least they'll, they'll be better informed. So that would be good.
Can I ask a question about nonconforming?
Yeah.
If a building or structure is nonconforming, does that mean every time you do anything with it, you have to get a special permit for it? Is there any special burden put on a property that becomes, that is nonconforming?
Well, it depends on what you're doing. So if you're respecting the current nonconformity and you're not expanding it or making it worse, no, you do not need a special permit. At least, that's my understanding of that section.
Not increasing-
Not increasing the nonconformity.
Nonconformity, right.
If you go to increase a nonconformity, yes, you're into a special permit realm, if you will. And if you're creating a new nonconformity, you are in a variance situation.
Does the town need a variance to create a nonconforming lot?
The town?
Town, yes.
I would think so. State law says-
We need to check.
It's an interesting question.
Well, because our bylaw that has changed my home on Locust Street, saying it no longer needs to be a three-family, has created a nonconformity, because the zoning says I can only build three units on it if one of them's affordable. The town, in its wisdom, has taken away that compliant and made my building nonconforming.
I see what you're getting at.
I'm in a battle with the town on this issue. I'm now proposing they didn't have the right to do it. And they have made my lot nonconforming. And so if a resident needs a variance to make it nonconforming, then I believe the town also needs a variance.
I think it's important to just point out that that's a different scenario that I thought you were getting at.
Well, it is. The language is the same.
No, what I meant by that was, I thought you were asking, if the town were the applicant, could they bypass a variance?
No. In this case, the town didn't even apply. They just made it nonconforming.
Right. It's different. And I wouldn't want to wade into-
No, you answered my question. I'm going to bring it up.
No, you're right. You do have a battle with the town, but this is not the battleground.
No, I wanted to understand the nonconforming issue. It is on town meeting. It is coming up forward, and I need to understand it fully. I was really trying to, I saw the language about nonconforming. I thought it was appropriate to understand it.
So just for clarity's sake, so at the next meeting, the meeting of September 17th, we're going to ask Bob Mitchell to attend. He's one of our consultants who put together the nonconforming section. And he will provide a synopsis or an overview of all of the changes that went into that section. I will do a presentation on the Mr. Cott accessory and home occupation. So we'll provide all of that detail when you open your hearing. That will be the opening itself. And then further down the road, just like you suggested, Charlotte, for town meeting members, my plan is to, just like we've done in the past, send an email to town meeting members that has as least amount of words as I can, that summarizes these changes. But this year, I think what I'm going to do is just record a video and explain everything in a video so that people can just- and explain everything in a video so that people can just hit play and listen rather than have to read everything. So, it, 'cause they're fairly easy concepts to understand, it's just...
Yeah, it's, it's the redlining that makes it easy to, to understand.
Yeah.
So, the more people who can see that and get a copy of it, the better it will be.
Right.
But I don't think that the hearings will be a place to really be dealing with special cases.
And importantly, the select board just officially executed the warrant last night. So, what we're gonna be doing tomorrow is printing out copies of both the articles and the redlines and leaving them in the planning office. So, if anyone comes and wants a paper copy, they can just grab one. That way, full opportunity to educate yourself.
Okay. Before we move on to committee reports, could you just give a minute to how the select board dealt with the short-term rental issue? Because we completed our hearings, the town council drafted us a proposal. It is now, it will be managed, it will be enforced through the, the health department, Scott McGann, but it will be managed through the select board, not us. This won't be our, our issue, it's gonna go through the select board. But could you talk about that for a minute?
Sure. So, as you know, last night, the select board executed the warrant. So, short-term rental by law is a general by law. So, it is not a zoning by law.
It's not in two forty, it's in three hundred, is that...
Yes, it will be, well, I'm not sure it'll be in three hundred.
It's not two forty.
Right. It's not in your zoning by law, it's in your general code. They also propose to amend the current rental by law that is in place now. So, we have a by law that says, you know, if you're gonna rent a property, you have to do X, Y, and Z. It does not specifically call out short-term rentals. So, these two amendments will effectively create clarity for if someone wants to have a short-term rental. The basics are that no, I'm trying to think of the term. There's no corporate ownership allowed in short-term rentals, as we've gone through before.
For this to become a town by law?
Correct, if town meeting were to approve it.
Question, does that mean an LLC? They can still have an LLC, right?
I believe they can.
The C stands for corporation.
Provided that there's an actual person and it's not a corporate entity that's an LLC. Like, there's a natural person who's a representative of that LLC, I believe. I'd have to reread it, it's not something that I've got on...
The limited liability corporation is all I know.
It's a corporation, it's true, and that issue came up.
And he said no corporations, so I...
No, we discussed that issue, and I'm surprised it's still there. But in seeing that it's still there, the, it's following what the other towns on the Cape have already done. And they're allowing LLCs.
Oh, I...
It with this, with this caveat.
I just thought the C was for corporation, I was just asking a question.
It is.
Yes, and he said no corporations.
No, I know why the question came up.
It's, it's beyond...
Except LLCs.
There's, there's language in there... All I can say...
It's just language I'm trying to understand.
Sure. There's language in there that restricts corporate entities from buying up properties and lease, and renting them out as short-term rentals, right? That was the major concern is, on the working group, was that, you know, a business could come in and just buy up properties in a whole neighborhood and turn it into a business operation rather than what we know is existing now. It's just property owners who wanna lease or rent out their properties over the summertime. So, importantly, each property...
Restricted one?
Yes, I was just gonna get to that.
Oh, sorry.
Each property is, or owner is restricted to one short-term rental in a calendar year. I know there's some other regulations in there, but I can't remember them offhand. There's some application requirements, do you remember? So, the basic premise here is that, as Charlotte, you mentioned, the Board of Health would be the permitting authority. And through that process, they can establish rules and regulations, just like your subdivision regulations, which say, if you're gonna apply, you need to have these certain required documents in order to get a permit. And you have to fill them out in this way, and you have to pay this amount of fee, et cetera, et cetera. So, the rules and regulations still need to be created and adopted by the Board of Health, but the rule is in place provided that town meeting approves it. And so...
I've got a question. Why is the Board of Health the designated board?
Right. So, it's because, for a couple of reasons. One, it's what everyone's doing, but with rental properties, the Board of Health currently is the permitting agency, and that's primarily because of the housing code. So, they go out and inspect the property if someone wants to rent it to other people and make sure that, you know, there's sanitary facilities, there's, you know, the sleeping, eating, whatnot amenities.
And the Board of Health is on board with this?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Are they presenting at town meeting or are we?
We're not.
The select board, it's a petition of the select board.
You don't have any role here.
Correct.
That is correct. But if there's one condition, you can actually have more than one short-term rental, but you have to seek a special permit for it?
No, you're, you're confusing, as, as have I. You're confusing the accessory apartment by law with the short-term rental by law. So, the accessory apartment, that's an important component here. In the state law, they allow for more than one accessory apartment if you would like to, but you need to seek a special permit.
I thought I saw the same line in that proposal.
No. No, because remember, the, the working group is very concerned about the number of short-term rentals that a property owner could have, or an, essentially, a resident could have. And we initially capped it at one with the understanding that if one doesn't work and we hear a lot of pushback, that, you know, there could be consideration to increase that number sometime in the future. But it felt best, the group felt best to restrict it at one for this sort of first try at regulating short-term rentals.
Can these accessory units now be short-term rentals?
No. So, in your accessory apartment by law, you have regu, you have language in there that restricts the rental period.
The state's not changing that.
Correct. We did not change that. In fact, the state law specifically says that you can continue to restrict short-term rentals on accessory apartments.
Okay, that's it for your report.
I can give more.
Are there any committee reports? No? In that case, any announcements? Paul?
I have two. Jeremiah Pearson at Tree Warden, has been working very hard in Shiverich Park. The last two or three weeks, he had more than a dozen people out there pulling weeds, including my wife and I. And it was really overgrown from the soil they used from the recycled area. That was all pulled up. The DPW went in and cleared the pollinated garden in the west side. And today, they were planting annuals, or perennials, excuse me, on that area. And they're expecting a estimated, estimate to come in on the walkway through there. And they're planning on putting a couple of benches and a table in there. It's going to be a spectacular park. They've gone overboard, it's really gonna be very, very nice.
Very nice.
So, they're making good progress, and thanks to Jeremiah and, and Mark Casper from Conservation. They're doing a real good job. The second issue is, the town named a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary task force for begin the planning of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the country. And eight people submitted applications, they interviewed seven and picked them, and the eighth one was out of town. And today, that was the first meeting. And fortunately or otherwise, I was named chair. But we're making progress, and it's gonna be a big job, but there's a lot of enthusiasm. And I think the right people on the committee, people with a lot of expertise, not only statewide, but also on a lot of different areas, school and artwork and so forth. So, it's, I'm very optimistic.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you for your service on both.
I just have a question for Jed. We continued the house-to-home development, but I, I just wanted, I was just curious to see if they were gonna come back with a cluster development as opposed to just the way they've got it going for us now?
I don't believe that they're going to.
Okay.
I've reached out. We can do that again and bring that back to the board, but I don't believe that they're planning on that.
Have they, are they ready to deal with all the waivers they need to, or they need to request?
I was surprised to see the continuance. I thought they were ready to go.
Because...
They seem to address everything.
I don't want them to waive the environmental report.
They've actually submitted one.
They have? Have we seen it yet?
Well, it was in your packet for tonight, so you can bring that home if you'd like, but that will, in theory, be the same information.
Has it been emailed to us?
Yes.
It has?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I missed it. Was it today?
It was in the email I sent with everything.
Friday.
I missed it also.
I missed it. I was looking for it too.
Okay.
But that doesn't matter, I miss a lot of things.
Future agenda items? No? Then are we, our next meeting will be on the twenty-fourth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, it's the last week. And that will be really in preparation for town meeting. Pretty much.
Move adjournment?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?